Bob Bishop.
Here.
Edward Hollis.
President.
John Webb.
Here.
Ken, can we get some minutes for the next meeting? So we're at four months behind.
Yeah.
We're running behind.
Yeah, I told you. Go ahead.
Okay. Public to address the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designated. Please record on the respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make that request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Is there anyone that would want to speak to any of the items on the agenda? Richard?
Hi. Richard Hall, 164 Greenridge Drive. If I can be recognized for the Spectrum high-definition upgrade.
Okay. Anyone else? Just the open forum? Yes.
My name's Jerry Roberts. I'm the bar manager at the Dalton Leachon and a finance officer. I've had several people stop me this week to tell me that we were selling the building and moving down the back. They heard it at the select board meeting. So I wanted to come down to clarify that, that that's nothing but a rumor that's been around for years. We're not actively selling the building. We're trying to. We have no plans on leaving. But it does affect us.
Oh, absolutely.
When you hear something like this, because I've had people that have said, "I was going to book a party next year," you know, "for a high school reunion, but I heard you weren't going to be here." It really hurts when people say things like that, and when it's on TV, it seems kind of So I just wanted to stop down and mention it, that we have no plans on moving anywhere at this point. We have no plan on selling at this point. We're not as financially sound as we used to be. We're still viable. So I just wanted to stop down and mention that.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Any questions, Mr. Hall?
In context, did that come up?
It didn't. It didn't come up. Nothing like that, Ken. We're talking about the ball fields.
I heard they were talking about the ball field, and someone said, "I know I shouldn't say this, but we probably don't want to talk to them."
And that's one of the rumors that's been going around for a long time, as you just said.
Yeah.
That the Leachon was considering an alternative building and building a place in the back.
Uh...
Right. I'm glad you're here to confirm that, that's not true.
That's kind of bar talk, that, you know, some of the members have discussed doing something like that. But it's not, uh, we're not working on a plan. We haven't, we're not marketing the building. Unless one of you guys want to buy it. You know, at this point, there's no plans for that at all. You know, a lot of things have been suggested for down there, but, you know, you hear the same rumors about Crane and Company and Alafon's Pharmacy, or, you know, I mean, some of them actually work out, some of them don't. No plans. Nothing's been discussed. I'm the finance officer. I'm on the executive board. If it had been discussed, I'd be aware of it. Nothing at all. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Item six. CRA road race on Sunday, May 6th.
I make a motion to approve the CRA road race from May 6th at 9:30 a.m. starting at Estes Middle School.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Next, hazard mitigation plan update. Dan, thank you for doing all this.
Excuse me?
Thank you for doing all this. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. As you know, the emergency management department and many of the people in the room here with us have been working together to update our hazard mitigation plan. We have to do that every five years, and we've gained a lot of input from the different boards, committees within the town, and there's a couple of things that we've asked them to do. The first of which is, this is a, you might have seen the things as natural hazards and effects of Dalton. That is a rough draft of the first 25 pages or so of what our plan will be. What we're asking is that, that's this one, not the survey. We ask different, the people that are participating in this survey, we've also asked the select board to review this. There may be something in it you see that you think should be added, preworded, whatever it could be, but we think that it's important that the select board is aware of exactly what we're doing, how it's coming about, and provide input where it's available on it. And as I said, this is the first 25 pages. Everything else should be a lot less, but this is the most important part that we have to this day. So I've given a copy of that to the select board. The second part is the, what is called the local mitigation planning handbook. Okay? The name of it is kind of confusing. I call it, believe I called it a survey when I sent out the report to you guys on it. What it is, is a paperwork which you can go through, and you can fill in the different aspects of the community, things that are going on at the master plan. Does the town have a master plan? Does it have a capital improvements plan? What I have found talking to people, a lot of people are aware of individual sections of this, but nobody's aware of everything about it. What I'm hoping to do, what we're hoping to do with the hazard mitigation group, this is all stuff that will go into the plan, the knowledge of these plans, is get different people to look at it, fill in information. The storm water treatment plan, different things like that. There's things in the town I'm not aware of, other members of the committee may not be aware of, and we want everyone to be able to give us input to different things that they thought of, things that they may want to see in a plan, or we should be considering. They have sections you can write in there. So once again, I gave this to the select board and town manager to fill out and provide it back to us with information. I also ask for people to identify themselves when they return it to me, in case we have a question about specific things that are going on with it. But it's an important part of what the hazard mitigation plan will be. We can show participation by everyone from the select board down through the community.
The survey, for lack of a better term, I guess.
Yes.
From the select board, is one survey or five?
Well, I was asking everybody to look at it, provide it to me. If there's stuff that has to be added together, we'll take it together. Your views on something, or what something could be, or could be done, could be different than what John or Ed's is.
Okay.
So it would be better if we can get it all together.
So you want individual?
If we could, yes.
Okay. By March 1st?
As possible. The next part of the plan for the hazard mitigation plan is, this month, we're going to finish up meeting with different committees that we're meeting with. March, we're going to start doing public meetings and finalizing of the plan, and then we should have everything done, we hope, by late May, early June, to meet our date, which is July 1st.
Anything else for Dan on this? Thank you.
I love hearing you guys' work.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more thing?
Absolutely.
What happens if we miss the deadline?
I don't know. We've never, we haven't discussed it. We're on track to meet the deadline. I would imagine that if it was, if something came up that would cause us to miss it, we would probably apply to the state for an extension. They've been very cooperative with us, Meme. The people at Meme have been very good, talking to us, dealing with us, answer questions almost immediately, so I don't think it would be a problem.
The reason I ask is that would it be detrimental to what we have applied for with Walker Brook?
No. But this is, the old hazard mitigation plan, the one we're replacing, is what Walker Brook is being based on.
Okay.
So it's still out there, and hopefully somebody's signing a piece of paper saying, "Let's go right now," but we'll see. Thank you.
Item eight. Record on the traffic commission on Washington Mountain Road. Dan, you're on again.
Yep. Give me a second, please.
Sure, absolutely.
As you know, we've been very active trying to come up with solutions with Washington Mountain Road. I provided a report to the town manager, the select board, about actions we've taken to date. I covered some of them in the last meeting. We've been in contact with Mass DOT about the roads and the bridges. The BRPC about doing a traffic study on the road, and also about coming in and doing signage. We just found, heard today from Cleat Kous, I believe his name is, from BRPC. He is going to come out sometime, we hope, at the end of this month to do a survey of Washington Mountain Road, to look at signs, and have considerations about what signs could be put up to change and make it safer. We've asked him also to look at the possibility of putting solar-activated signs up on the mountain. And as soon as we hear something more from him on that, we'll let you know. As I said, we found out about that today. Excuse me. We've, the people from the bridges contacted us late last week, wanting to know if we had plans for the bridges on Washington Mountain Road. We've asked John roughly to look into it. I'm looking around here. We'll check a couple other places, but I believe those bridges were put up a long time ago. I'm not sure if we'll have any plans. I don't believe they need the plans from us to do it. It would just make it easier for them to do their survey and to go forward with possibly posting the bridges with signs. So it's another area that we're working on. They cannot do a speed study until summer at the earliest, and that's still up in the air. We have not, that I'm aware of, heard from either Beckett, Washington, or Pittsfield about our request on doing a heavy truck ban. You know, once that comes forward, we can move in whatever direction we need to go for that. And I will point out, a lot of the things we're doing, speed study, the evaluation of the bridges, all are things that we would be required to do if we have a heavy truck ban. I met with the Board of Health February 5th and talked to them about the noise generated by the Jake brakes. They supplied a report to the town. I believe you all received a copy of the report. It would appear that there's a question as to whether or not the nature of the Jake brakes, which is an intermittent noise, would fall within our noise guidelines. So they're going to do some more research, I believe, but basically, I don't believe there's going to be a noise study. Too many issues that would come up from it. Verification of the vehicle, stopping the vehicle, and fitting, as I said, the noise ordinance, which calls for continuous noise, and we're talking about intermediate noises. But they were very helpful. They gave a number of suggestions to me. And Ed Fay, he said, you know, he'll keep me apprised of different things he's been looking into to help us out with whatever we can do. But other than that, right now, until things fall into place, we get more answers from the different groups, not much more can be done from our point with what's on Washington Mountain Road. JACO, chief, having people up there doing traffic, just doing regular patrols, looking for different problems. I've been in constant contact with some of the people up there via email about things that they've observed, and we just see what we can end up doing. We're doing what we can right now and go from here.
Thank you. How much?
Is the chief or the police department aware of Mr. Fay's report?
I'm not sure. I haven't talked to the chief about that as yet, but I do know that the report was sent to myself and to the town manager. I'll get him a copy tomorrow to make sure he does.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Great work, chief. Hey, we're all here to alleviate the problems on Washington Mountain Road, but I wish I'd brought this up before. And the letter that went out to the other towns?
Yes.
I think that letter should have came from the select board after a vote, after a vote, or from the town manager on the authority of the select board. And the select board should have discussed specifics about a heavy truck ban. I mean, some people, heavy truck is a big pickup. We should be more specific before we ask somebody to support our ban. Are we talking about weight, gross vehicle weight, length, height?
We're dealing with exactly what Mass DOT calls the bans for that type of vehicle. It's called a heavy truck vehicle ban.
What is a heavy truck? What kind of trucks does that encompass?
I can just tell you what my impression about that, what that's being, but it's to deal with tractor-trailers, heavy delivery trucks. We're talking about semi-trucks, not single, what they call single cab trucks. Construction vehicles. I guess that, as for a definition, I'm sure I can come up with a definition out of the MUTCD, but...
I guess what I'm getting at is, you sent out a letter saying assistance in a heavy truck ban. If I was on a board of selectmen in Washington or Beckett, I'd say, "What does that mean? You gotta be more specific," I think. What are we asking them to do?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think they should understand what's being done. And the letter was sent out because there was a directive that I believe came from the select board to the town manager, that they pursued, looking at doing a heavy truck ban for the road.
The letter was sent by me on behalf of the town. Dan, prepare it for me.
Oh, okay. That's good. You signed the letter, Ken, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That was one of my points. The second point, it just said, but it was just a generic term. We're seeking your cooperation in the heavy truck ban.
Yeah, we didn't, I don't recall defining what a heavy truck...
It's probably, as Dan was saying, defined through the, whatever your acronym was, the MT, UTC, whatever it is, but it's something that every town in the Commonwealth has to go by, and, I don't know, I didn't take it any differently other than big trucks.
I can get you a copy of the exact section of the amendment, if you'd like.
I just thought it was somewhat vague, though. What trucks are we trying to ban here? I mean, they come in all the shapes and sizes, lengths and weights and...
That's correct.
And types.
That's correct.
And axles. Axles are important.
Yeah.
Number of axles. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anything else to say, Dan? Great work.
Yes. Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Item nine. Spectrum high-def, ID upgrade. John, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah. What precipitated this was a phone call, automated phone call from Spectrum, which probably, I hope, many people may have gotten in town. And it was supposed to be sent after a letter that you were supposed to receive from Spectrum outlining what is going on. Kind of a long story short, I called and called again and spoke to several people and tried to figure out, and this is more personal, what happened with me and my conversations, but I'm sure it's going to pertain to most everyone in the town. And my reason for asking to have this on the agenda is informational, just to let people know what's going on, and from my perspective. And Mr. Hall sent out an email today, which I looked over, which is a list of fees and charges. But at any rate, I'm just going to run down a few things. It's kind of complicated in a way with Spectrum. Taking over Charter Time Warner Cable, and even though we're, Spectrum customers are actually still Time Warner Cable customers, and South County is Charter customers, and because of that, there are two different fees, and specifically for the digital receivers or for the boxes that you have to have for each TV now, that cost X number of dollars, they're cheaper down South County than they are up here by about half. But again, this, Spectrum is, it was said, is going to offer 100% all digital signal and programming by March 6th of this year. And because of that, every TV that you may have in your, in your home is going to need a receiver. And they'll give you a receiver, one receiver for a TV for free for a year, but after that, you're going to have to pay for it. Now, and I don't have all the answers for this, but when I spoke to the individuals at Spectrum, and the office that I was talking to was in Syracuse, New York, so, they indicated, as I said, that every, every single TV that you have would have to have a box. The cost per, for Time Warner Cable customers here, for us in town, would be $11.75 per month. Now...
Per box?
Per box. This is quite a hit. There's not a lot of good news to this report, and, but I just wanted to get it out of there, out here, so that people knew. However, believe it or not, if you want to become a Spectrum customer here, you can. All you got to do is tell them. But there's a difference in cost for your contract, and you have to figure out which is best for you. Each, each home has a variety of, not contracts, but setups for their home, as for what you receive, whether it be phone, internet, cable, how many boxes, this, that, and the other thing. And depending on what that is, depends on how your bill may change, if you become a Spectrum customer versus what we are now as a Time Warner customer. And they actually told me that, you know, it's a lot cheaper if you just buy a Roku device. Now, I don't know if a lot of people know what Roku is, but it's, it almost looks like a memory stick that you plug into your, well, cable-ready TV, which isn't cable-ready anymore come March 6th. And you can stream television through this device, but, you know, the problem is, is that you have to have a wireless remote to do that. It doesn't hook up to anything but the internet. So that's another issue. Many people don't have the modems or the wireless internet capacity, so you can't use a Roku device, so you're going to have to get a box of some sort. So then the issue came up with, well, a lot of people, including myself, have the old TVs, you know? Put the cable in the back, you don't have plugs or anything else like that. They still work. And I noticed that there are two types of boxes that you can get, and I confirmed this with the people in Syracuse, at least the person, one of the people I was talking to when I called back, that you can get, it's two different types of connecting boxes or tuner boxes. One's an HD receiver and one's a standard receiver. And you, and I said, "You can get a standard receiver?" And he says, "Yes, you can. You just have to specify when you call and ask for it. The cost is the same. It doesn't help you any, but the cost is the same." So it's important to know what you actually need for a box. So a basic, someone with a basic subscription who has an old TV maybe, which this may apply to many people in town, you'd have to get a particular type of box. So there's, I wish I could say there's a lot of up to this, but there really isn't. But it's, it's, we're going to be going through the same issues that South County did, if you remember the articles in the paper. And it, I don't, I don't know of a way out right now. I don't, South County didn't get a way out of this, and we have to ride the waves of... As well, is when I went to price them, just to see what they are, you can get one from $30 to $100. It depends on what you want. And I don't know the difference between the four different models that I saw there, because I just looked and I go, "Okay, this isn't cheap either." So I guess my advice is call Spectrum, and the number that they say to call is 844-278-4927. And find out from them. Talk to the people. They're very good. You may have to wait six or 10 minutes before an operator will pick up. They'll call you back. You just leave your name and they'll call you back, and they do. And find out exactly what you need as a, as a home, and take it from there at this time. But time is short. March 6th, if you don't have the receivers, you may not get a signal at all. And I was surprised how short a time period it was. I never received a letter. Did anyone receive a letter?
No. I had a phone call.
A phone call. I got a phone call. That was it. So, and also, what, what Mr. Hall sent to us is on the Spectrum website, from what I could tell from the header, Rich.
Yeah.
Is spectrum.com/brow slash content slash rate card dot HTML. So if you go there, you will see what the rates are. They're not, I don't know, they don't appear to be a lot different than Time Warner Cable, but some of them aren't. But again, the only way you're truly going to find out what's going on is if you call Spectrum. They have all your information on their, on their system to tell you what would happen if in fact you wanted to change to a Spectrum customer versus a Time Warner customer.
That's true.
So, and that's, that's what I wanted to let people know about, and if there's discussion to be had, fine. So that's what I have to do.
John?
Dan, I completely confirm what you say. There's two tiers of customers now. The former Time Warner customers, and they knew, was it Charter?
Charter was char, so...
And they're priced differently. And if you go down to their office, and I suggest everybody that's really interested, if they can, they go down to their office in Pittsfield in the Frederico Office Park, and talk to them face-to-face. They have all your information, and put it to them point-blank. "How can I save money? What can I do? What can I get rid of to reduce it?" And if you really push the issue, you'll find some ways to save money. You can have maybe HBO removed from your service. There's a lot of things you're charged for, if you look on your bill, that you probably don't even watch. So, yeah, the thing about the boxes is absolutely correct, Dan. $11 apiece per month.
But if you change to a Spectrum customer, it goes down to the six bucks.
Yeah, there are, yeah. There are differences in pricing.
Yes.
In fact, I went down here to inquire about a pricing difficulty. They suggested, "Let's figure it out both ways, with the Charter price and the old Time Warner price." And they did. It was almost the same, but they said, "You might as well just stay with the Time Warner, because you're more or less grandfathered."
Well, the other thing that was a difference was the internet speed.
Yeah.
Believe it or not.
It's a new issue.
So if you need faster internet speed, become a Spectrum customer. Why? I don't know. It's the same cable, same company, but you're a Time Warner Cable customer. That must be a bad thing. I don't know, but...
But you're right. It's a pretty bleak outlook.
It's, yeah, and the time, the time that it's going to take place is very short. I was surprised that it was when I asked, "When's this going to take place?"
Anyone else? Richard, you want to say anything?
Yeah, sure. One thing, as John pointed out, I did send the information from Spectrum, and I'm going to keep it brief. But one of the things that you can do is go out and buy a receiver outside Spectrum. These receivers will take a cable card, which should allow you to get a cable card from Spectrum and then be able to use a receiver. But it's not clear whether or not that's going to work with, because if you own your own receiver, then you're not renting it per month.
What's a card? I mean, physically, what is the card?
Well, it's a small card that slots into...
Like an SD card?
Like an SD card. And they have it listed for, on basic service, a buck apiece. So can you rent that card and put it into your own receiver? I mean, I think personally, because this affects the whole town, it might be good to ask Spectrum to send one of their representatives to be able to answer some of them. ask Spectrum to send one of their representatives to be able to answer some of them.
We've been asking them to get them here for once, about a month.
Yeah, I'm just saying. Because as you said, now you can get cable to all your TVs and as of March 1st, it's not, not going to be able to do that. And when I asked them to go to basic service, they couldn't do that in the Pittsfield office. They had to ask a supervisor to, to switch me to basic service, which seems a little crazy that they can't do that in the local office. I'm guessing that's making it a little bit harder to do that.
Every company nowadays has a customer retention plan. If you threaten them, they'll all of a sudden give you a discount rate.
Right.
It's going to expire in six months or something like that. Whether you're your car radio, your cell phones or whatever.
Right.
You're exactly right. It's just a stall tactic.
Yeah. But, but I think if everyone looks at this URL, it's the rates that are set by the towns that are part of this agreement, so it's a good basis to talk to Spectrum.
We're still trying to get a signed agreement from them. Or with them, I shouldn't say from them, with them, which is stalled. It seems to be just the same way with Time Warner. One of the things too that they said, "If you have a smart TV, which means you can connect with the internet like your smartphone, that'll work too. You don't need a Roku device or you don't need a digital receiver. But you need the wireless internet. You need a, you need a model." So.
I have a question. The town has many TVs. Is someone in the town looking into what's the best deal for the town? Are you, this, this-
Yeah? No?
Okay. Maybe we should have someone.
I think so.
Okay, was there some mumblings about revitalizing the cable, Community Cable Commission?
Yes.
Committee? Is committee headway ahead?
In fact, I got to receive three suggestions today. Want to talk to one possible candidate?
Great.
The chairman is, he's going to be out of town because he's in Florida.
The plague broke out. Did you do it?
I think so. In fact, I contacted the contract representative again today and asked, "Where's our contract?" Whichever version of you are, it's Spectrum Time Warner Charter.
I have another candidate for you too, for the commission, if it isn't the same one that you have.
Okay. Anything else, son? Thank you, John. Great work. Appreciate it.
Complicated.
Yeah, fair enough.
It was literally over an hour on the phone trying to figure it out because one, one issue generated another question, you know, and another question.
They have cleared it by internet for the fast one. Doesn't seem any faster than we have with you. It doesn't seem, it's just a-
It's down all the time.
Yeah.
You don't go up?
No.
No. Ours did because we went to the fastest, fastest one with three young kids and every time iPod or iPads and Xboxes and TVs are all smart TVs. It's slower than that. It's slow.
Okay. Item 10, discussion on elimination of health insurance for the select. Okay, we're supposed to review this every year as to what the decision we made last year.
Well, I would like to make it permanent and I would like to make sure that we're doing it in such a fashion that it really is binding. Again, when I was elected in May, I was offered insurance and even though it was in the period of the year where it was supposed to be suspended, I was offered it. It is a real long-term liability for the town, and I think it's intrinsically, basically unfair because we are working less than 19 hours a week. I certainly believe anyone who works 20 hours a week or more should be getting insurance, but that isn't the case really with members of the Select Board. And this, we are facing so much expenses coming up, more than usual operating expenses. Expenses, obviously, people are aware of the old Dalton High School, the problem with the sewer system, it is more than one liability. We're talking millions of dollars additional expenses beyond what we normally have just to run the, the town. To have this extra cost, it, it just isn't fair to the taxpayers. So I, I would like to have it permanently not available and I, I would like that we would have a vote on this in the near future and check with our lawyer to make sure that it is legally binding going forward. For people who are now getting, now, people who have previously served, who are retired and are glad, it will not affect them. It is only meant that those that are currently on it and any new members that get elected would not have the option of taking it.
I don't, I don't, I understand what you're saying. Last year and, and still this year, I'm not in favor, I'm really not in favor of doing away with it. I just don't, I just don't want to shut the door and I wish there was a, wish there was an intermediate ground on this. We have contribution splits and the only difference that we have between splits for insurance right now are regular employees and retirees. Retirees are 75, 25, and regular employees are 70, 30.
72 and a half.
72 and a half. Okay. 27 and a half. Okay. Yeah, with Select Board members, I don't believe at this point in time you can even contribute to Berkshire County Retirement because there's a, there's a monetary or salary threshold and we don't even come close to that. It's, I believe it's $10,000 a year. Does that ring a bell with you?
I think it's $5,000, but I can't say I'm certain.
$5,000 a year?
I think so.
Okay. At this point, when it was brought up at town meeting, I think it was town meeting.
Yeah, it was town meeting.
Because Mary talked about it, that at that point in time, no one was taking the benefit. And I don't, and I don't know that anyone is. And I know that's not what you're getting at is for the future.
That, that is correct. And to may add, there are other elected officials who, who work many hours. There are many people who are appointed that I am aware of that work more hours than we do and they have no benefits. They have no stipends and no salaries. It is just basically unfair and I think it's actually disrespectful for all the people who do so many hours and get absolutely no compensation that we would think that we would be entitled to something that could end up costing the town $20,000 per person. That is just so wrong and we are not that rich at the town anymore. We are getting poorer and we're about to get a lot poorer the way things are going. So we, we really need to step up on this and do the right thing. And I think we also should be showing good examples, not how much we can manage for ourselves, but we, we really need to look out for the people that elected us. And I, I, I can't believe that there is really resistance to this, but apparently there is. Well, let's have some more resistance.
I'm not going to resist.
Okay.
I'm just going to read your Massachusetts General Law. That's all.
Fine.
Fine. Requires, Chapter 32B, GLC 32B, Chapter 3. Requires the municipality to provide group insurance for its employees. Employee is defined as GLC, as any person in the service of a municipality who receives compensation or such in whose duties require no less than $20. And then, I don't know, before this came, probably was in our folder, and this is Massachusetts General Law. Unless you're going to overturn it, this board has no authority.
Many towns in the Berkshires have already eliminated Select Board members.
It can be, it can be eliminated by vote.
We're eliminating it now.
Okay.
Now, again, this is in our folder. Except persons that are elected by popular vote may be considered eligible during the entire term for which they are elected regardless of the number of hours devoted to the service of the governmental unit. Now, it's nice, but what your suggestion is, a nothing burger. You called me on that too, because this board, in the past, and I've been on it, no one's ever taken, took advantage of the insurance that I know of. Nobody does it now, and I don't see anybody in taking it in the future unless, wait a minute, unless the board changes. And then there might possibly be an exposure. So we should wait till that time. What we should do until then is voluntarily, which is what we're already doing, not take it. And while you were at, you were, when you were elected to this board, while you, I'm assuming it was the town treasurer, offered it to you, who is because that's the law. And this board can't change it.
Okay.
You can't change the law.
We absolutely can change, change this. Other towns have, have done that. It, it is actually, there's an election coming up. Someone could be thinking, "Gee, I think I need this insurance. I'm going to run." And then they get elected and then you're told you, you, you may not get it. I think it's best to take it right now if this is the case. None of us are taking it. Let it be known if somebody is, is going to apply for papers, which are now available to run, that they should know that that's an issue, that they will not get it and not get it for their, their term.
Well, I love that.
You could also always overturn this back to the way it was. Yeah, you know, if you, if other members later on decide for some reason that they're entitled to this extra benefit, they could just change that in, in a year or two. But I think it should be that, that we do it every year, that we should do it clearly and make that so that the person who does run realizes that they're not eligible for it.
I think we lack the authority to do that.
We don't.
Under this Massachusetts General Law, if someone's elected to this board, they're simply entitled to it by law.
That isn't true.
It is true. It's right there.
Okay, I'm not the one to put that piece of paper in there.
Well, there's two of them. I got my own. I researched it. It is true, Ed. Now-
How is it that other towns can do it?
Because other towns, their selectmen aren't paid.
No, that's not true. That is absolutely not true.
Really?
It's not true. Why don't, okay, why, may I suggest this, that we ask the town lawyer to clarify that point? Is that a possibility?
Ken, can you get that?
That's consensus of the board, well?
Yes, I would say-
I'll tell you what I understand about it.
Okay. That the Select Board, if you look at this, and I'm the one to put this in here for your reference.
Thank you.
Massachusetts General Laws. They highlight appropriate public authority. Now, the appropriate public authority, in this case, the Select Board determines which compensated elected, elected officials can receive health insurance. So by state law, any employee or near employee works 20 hours a week or more, it has to be covered by health insurance. Splits are something different, but you have to be covered by health insurance. However, if you're an elected municipal official and you receive compensation, the Select Board is the determining authority as to who receives health insurance. Now, the Select Board, I believe, could enact a policy that's saying no, that would say no Select Board members can have insurance. We can put it in our book. I think what happened this year to you is that I didn't communicate that to the town treasurer and of course you were elected and sure asked you. So, and I remember that vote. So if you want to vote that policy, we can put it in the book of Select Board, in our town code, as a policy of the Select Board. Doesn't mean another board couldn't overturn it.
Right.
Because the only way you can eliminate it permanently either is by, my opinion, eliminating salaries for the Select Board or filing special legislation that says not to standing here. Any general special law, to the contrary, the board of selection of the ball cannot receive health insurance.
If this board adopted such a policy, would that contravene Massachusetts General Law?
No, because now we would have to get a town council's opinion, of course, because this is only my opinion, but from what I've encountered in the past. Because the Select Board is the appropriate public authority to determine which compensated elected officials receive health insurance, that policy would be binding unless overturned by another Select Board. And that can take, you know, that can take place at one certain time.
That being, I'm sorry.
No, you go right ahead. That being said, so the vote last year that we held, that we weren't going to offer for this year for the Select Board?
Right.
Not binding?
Well, it is binding because you took, you took that vote.
Right.
Okay, so, so it is binding, just in virtue of the fact that you took that vote. Basically, what you're saying, Ken, is what John proposed, if we do that, is kind of like we don't have to do it every year. It's kind of like- If you, if you enact a policy-
Right.
And it goes in the codebook as a policy of the Select Board. And then somebody else can undo it if so necessary. Right.
You know, what you were talking about to, the Select Board makes a determination of who can get the health insurance. There's a, there's a sentence here in the, at the end of the first paragraph on page four, it says, "A determination by the appropriate public authority," which is the Select Board.
Yes.
"That a person is eligible for participation in the plan of insurance shall be final." The way I read that, is that what you were referring to? The way I read that is if there's a question about, well, should a planning board is elected, correct?
Yes, that was what I was going to say.
So, so if, if it comes to, I'll say, this is just hypothetical, a planning board member says, "Well, I'm entitled for insurance." Well, we make the determination whether that person is eligible.
I don't think so. I think you have to have a salary too.
But, no, but I mean, we're making the deter, what this says is we are making the determination whether that person is eligible under this law. Obviously, that person is not because they're not compensated elected official. So versus a Select Board member says, "Hey, I can get the insurance." Well, according to, according to Massachusetts General Law, yes, you can, and we make that determination. That's how I read that sentence. It's not whether we can say, "You get it even though you're compensated, you get it because you're compensated, but you don't get it even though you are compensated." See the difference I'm making?
No.
We're, we, I don't think we can pick and choose. I think we have to do it by either town meeting vote or adopting something here by law to supersede that law.
Look, the case, I didn't copy the case notes because they're not, this is, came from online, but if you look in the law book, somewhere, it didn't say which town. The Select Board said, "Elected officials who receive compensation, but work less than 20 hours a week can't receive health insurance." That was the Select Board's determination. And it was challenged and a court found for the Select Board as having the authority to make that determination.
Okay.
Now, so, but with respect to persons, this, this determines who an employee is, whatever those employees, so you, you are employees because you receive compensation. Or an employee that receives compensation.
I'd also like to know, just, just if we're gathering information from town council, can we make a separate split for certain elected officials? Say, say if we wanted to, like I was saying, I don't particularly want to close the door, but I don't, I may want to find some middle ground here. So we, we as a municipality can, up to a maximum, if we, if we allow or we have a, have a benefit of insurance, can go up to 50%. Am I right with that?
That's the minimum.
That's the, that's the minimum. So let's just say we, we decide to, to do that. Can you find out if we can just, okay, Select Board members, if they so choose to take the insurance, are going to have to pay 50% of the premium, not 27 and a half. Know what I'm saying? So that we make a third, actually a third type of contribution level. I'm not saying that we will. I just want to, I just want to find out if we can do something like that. That's all. Okay.
Yeah, I'm interested in just banning it. I don't believe in taking it. And I think if we can get it, so some other Select Board down the road, if for some reason the health insurance becomes more readily affordable, that it can be undone.
Yeah. I, just real quick, because I know of an instance where we had an employee working less than 20 hours a week and his family's on Mass. How? And I think it's a shame that we get that benefit and someone like that doesn't get it.
And that, that's my, that's just, that's correct. That is basically unfair.
That being said, I also want, like John said and Bob said, I would like to leave it open so in the future, if we need to, we can open it back up instead of completely shutting the door on this and it, we don't get back to this ever again and it's out of the door.
Another, another, another select board, you're certainly doing it.
Right. See, that's, that's what I'm looking at too. You know, you don't know what's going to happen to people and if, say one of us, something catastrophic happened, you know, and you needed it. Well, for the short term, again, it would, it would, it would be a nice safety net, but I don't, you don't want to take advantage of it in the same way. I know it's complicated and people say, "Don't make things too complicated." But if we're allowed the benefit and we can modify it to whatever we, we may like, that may be an alternative. But again, I just, I don't know, I just have a problem with just completely doing away with it. But again, I understand why. Because it could get out of hand years down the road. We're not, we're not actually saving anything immediately because that benefit isn't being used, nor are we paying for retirees, as far as I know, from the Select Board. used, nor are we paying for retirees, as far as I know, from the select board, for that benefit.
I think, just to make a point, if you continue it, I would just choose to have the insurance then. And then it will be, then by doing that, it would be a cost. So, it will be a savings if you do go this way, because I won't bother signing up, which I don't even need the insurance, but I'll just do that to make a point.
Fine. I mean, that's your priority.
I won't really, it's just intrinsically unfair because we don't treat other people who work 19 hours a week this way, where they have, ever have the option of suddenly signing up. So why we would be considered special is just unfair. But I think I've said my speech.
I honestly don't think anybody on this board consciously would take it anyways.
Then we should have no problem making it.
Then why would we wanna change it? Nobody in the past history of the board has taken it, that I know of.
I can't remember.
And I don't see anything in the future.
I do question that, I actually do question that.
Past 20 to 30 years ago.
They definitely did, you know, I hear that.
But again, it's not, it was, it was short term.
Yep.
And also, back then, the splits were a big difference when I started working here as a patrolman. It was 1% to the employee and 99% to the employee.
But the cost was also a lot less, the total cost.
Oh yeah, and things.
That's the problem now. But the total cost, even if you pay, if you're paying 30% of the cost, it's still a lot to the town. I've heard that more, other people have taken it in the past, but I think the best thing is to ask Ken, what is possible, ask our legal counsel what is possible, that would be what I would suggest to start with.
Would that be possible for the next meeting? I'm trying to call and see if we can just keep it on the agenda and just.
Thank you.
Put it to rest.
I'm gonna point out that this issue came before the town meeting, I think it was two years ago.
I mean, it was two years ago, it was a different issue.
Oh, I'm at, I'm not done yet Ed.
All right, please.
And it was strongly defeated, overwhelmingly defeated.
May I not speak?
Sure.
The issue was totally different. What the person was doing to eliminate the possibility of insurance was to eliminate your salary, to eliminate your 3,000 plus dollars you were getting. Because if you eliminate that, you would not have the option. I also understand that there are people who are planning on doing that, again, if this doesn't actually move forward. So you may end up losing your salary and the benefit.
Fine. Nothing more, I like being threatened. I mean, I think it's great.
I'm just saying, this is the smoothest thing and it's also the fiercest thing.
I disagree Ed.
All right, let's find out the affirmation.
Let's get to the information. Continue it to next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. End of discussion for now.
I hope so.
Now, how do we really figure? Okay, department budget reviews and budgets update.
Mr. Kent? Okay, if you look at your schedule, I'll just run through the clicker, we're gonna look at tonight, we're gonna look at in numerical order, department number order. Select board, the collector related, department postage, clerk, elections and registrars related, building maintenance, computers, Old Dalton High, town hall, and central supplies, the building inspector, building commissioner, department tax title, and unemployment. I'd like to set aside the select board for a minute and get to our department.
That's a pleasure.
Don't mind.
Thank you.
I'd like to start with the collector's budget and our still new, still new collector, Melissa is here, and you should have the budget that says corrected. We found a slight error in it this morning, we corrected it. And you'll see that we have a slight decline in salaries because we have two new people in the positions, collector and assistant collector, with this decline of $5,000. No change in the expenses for that department. Overall, 5% decrease. And Melissa's here to answer any questions. Melissa, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, no.
Any questions for Melissa? Are things good?
Things are wonderful.
Things good, eh?
And I have to say this, during all the time that Melissa served by herself, I expected her to be up over her head and complaining about getting somebody on board, because it took us time to set up and interview people, didn't get one complaint, she did a marvelous job.
Thank you.
Marvelous job.
Thank you.
And now, but she is relieved that we have somebody on board, a very capable person. Very capable assistant clerk.
Okay, TA on this one?
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, postage. No change in postage, total expenditure requested $17,875.
What number is it?
That's attached.
Attached.
It's attached to the collector's budget.
I just found it.
Some extraordinary mailings are done by zip and sort, and those are the tax bills, right?
Correct.
They call it the really large mailings, and otherwise mailings go through the collector's office. We just resigned a lease for a postage machine. At one time, we bought the machine, then the technology falls behind, we're continuing upgrading it, now we just release it. Every three years, we get the latest upgrades in technology, it works a lot better.
Okay.
Good.
Yep. Okay, well, that was simple, thank you Melissa.
Thank you.
I'd like to set aside the town clerk because she couldn't be with us tonight, and I'll take you through that one in a couple of minutes, we can get on to that.
Elections as well?
Yeah.
The capital?
So everything to do with collectors, that's the board registrars, elections, and there's a capital request there. We're gonna go on to buildings and grounds, that's department one time, 92. And Pat is here with us this evening, and you'll see the appropriation for salaries is down slightly, that's 5,9,519. Request for expenditures is up slightly, $600 to $13,405. Overall, less than 1% increase in salaries and expenses. I wanna point out to you that we retained the person, you may remember, a couple of years ago, we budgeted for a buildings and grounds assistant who'd be shared with the highway department. We didn't fill, well, Pat was getting his feet wet and determining whether we really need that position. We didn't seek to fill it, I think we want to fill that as soon as we can, so that money is in here. Anything you'd like to add, Pat?
No.
Any questions?
TA?
TA, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The assistant is a 20-hour position?
For this one, it's a full-time job, split between highway.
Oh, split between the jobs.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
It filled it in the past. It was flexible, you know, the highway superintendent and the building superintendent could talk to each other, and as it needs change, they can, you know, so it worked well.
And the, you don't need gas or oil, you just get there from the highway department, is that what it is, or was that something that just was never used?
I'm only using very little for the snow blowers, that's about it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
You know, we did use it, Pat has the expense we didn't have before because he's using his own personal vehicle to travel between those and that, so we didn't have that expense before because Tim walked, who's taking places by the highway department.
Okay, TA?
Okay, the next building, the next budget, I'm sorry, you should have is 157, that's computers. Most of it is for technicians that we hired to come in, help maintain our computer systems, there's some little amount of money for software purchases and for hardware, whenever something conks out a little bit of money. And there, we're requesting no additional expenditures for that budget. Next budget is 191, vacant building maintenance, and you'll see that's zero, because remember, we have appropriated, it was 3,300 in the last fiscal year, and that's down to, I think, 6,000 or 7,000 in the prior year, but we have that reserve account, if you remember, it was insurance proceeds, that can be used for anything while we ramp up to tearing the building down.
Can't argue with that one.
Next budget in front of you should be 196, that's town hall. And you can see there's no requested increase in salaries, that's the contingency amount that employees, we keep there for overtime or when employees are, less overtime than extra time, sometimes employees come in on Friday and compensate them for that. And there's no increase in expenses at 89,000. Total budget appropriation requested 91,000. Central supply account, total requested $16,000, evenly divided between office supplies and computer supplies, no changes requested in that budget. Anything else you'd like to add, Ken?
No, I'm all good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Thank you, good job.
The next budget, setup budgets, it's not really one budget we have here, but we have another item along with the building apartments budget. Brian Duvall is here. Prepared a nice letter of explanation of his budget, if you have a chance to look at that. You'll see a tremendous decline in that budget, and that's obviously because we have that changeover from having contracted out the building inspection services, we had three, a four-town agreement with the town of Adams, and have now have our own building inspector, so the extra money we had to have under the expense portion is gone. So we have a slight decline in salaries because we have a newer employee, and we have a large decline in expenses, largely because we've taken out about $40,000 for the intermunicipal agreement. Other than that, things are pretty much the same. We've got a little extra money for travel, lodging, meals, dues, and memberships, I think for our software support, professional technical training. Brian, anything you'd like to add?
No.
No question?
No, Brian's doing a great job. Had two incidents over the last probably three months, two or three months, where people came to me and said, "You're doing a great job, you helped them out on a couple projects," so.
That's good to hear.
One of the things that Brian's been doing, he took the time to take a look at our, we were doing our building permitting fees, and I'm gonna let him take you through that, he's come up with an idea for changing the way we assess building permit fees, and I thought this was, you don't have to make a decision on this tonight, if you don't want to, we can bring it back to discuss it with you, but I thought, since he was gonna be here, it'd be great for him to explain what he's thinking about.
Currently, the, I think you all have a copy of, should have a copy of what's being used right now as the permit fee schedule. It's really rather confusing to me. A lot of it's broken down, measured off by square footage of the project. It's a certain $50, seems like the minimum permit fee, and then it's by certain amount per square footage. And a lot of the projects that come through, really, it's hard for contractors to try to estimate what the permit fees are, because you might have a project where you're doing some windows, where it is based on $5 per thousand, and it might just be a certain wall you're taking out, and, you know, what do you count for floor square footage? It becomes really difficult. And you get a lot of projects where that just doesn't work out anyways, you have a lot of solar projects that have come through, where I've just used $5 per thousand, $50 minimum as a basis fee anyways, because it really don't fall into anything that's been set up by the town. So a lot of the, you know, basically, and I've used the model that I presented to you, I do West Oak Ridge too, I do the same, basically the same fee schedule. $5 per thousand, which would be based on the cost of the construction project with a $50 minimum. And I've given you a couple of examples of certain, a couple of projects that give you an idea of what it might balance out to. I think it'll be a little bit more plus to the town, but it's definitely gonna be a lot easier for contractors to try to understand going into a project, what they might incur for a permit fee, because it's really complicated right now. The other thing too is on our current permit fee schedule for things like the reoccurring periodic inspections, it says right now, it's established by the state of Massachusetts. The state does not establish those fees at all. They haven't done that in years and years, so there is now a set fee of what I proposed, what those inspections would cost, which is pretty much what we've been using, no change in it, but it is gonna be listed in a fee schedule now, because there is no fee schedule for that. And then, the other things I've attached there too is the plumbing and gas and electrical fee schedules, there will be no changes in any of those, except that I'd like to add on plumbing and gas and electric, since we're using the outline permitting, the state boards have told every town, says that you have to still take a paper application from a plumber or electrician. So now, somebody from the town's gotta take that paper application and physically enter it into the permit program. So I'd like to add a $15 processing fee for anyone who does still want to submit a paper application that we have to take, to offset the cost of someone entering that, taking the time to do that.
So you have to enter that into the system when they bring it?
Yes, which I will be doing now, which I have found out that they had not been entered into the system. They've been, kind of just been put aside in a different pot. So that, other than that, they're all, those fees are set by the state, and they, pretty much every community uses the same fee schedules for those, so that's the only addition I'd like to add for those. And that's about it.
Brian, a quick question. On the front page of this, one-third of the way down, permits are required for seven-foot height, blah, blah, outdoor wood-fired boilers. Now, these wood-fired boilers, you simply issue a permit, or is there any environmental concerns involved with these things? Pollution aspect, are EPA regulations and rules?
There is mass-approved models.
Yeah.
That are, have to be used. And then, it goes by how close they are to somebody's property, how high the smoke stack has to be, but there is some set regulations on those.
What about ones that are in existence before, I understand these regulations are too old?
Anything permitted out previously has no effect of any changes that come across.
Okay, so you're grandpa.
There's no retroactive, going back and making anybody change anything. Yeah. It's all just as it comes through now, that's, those are the standards they have to meet.
Okay. From your point of view, are they rigid standards, or are they easy to comply with with the current standards on the market?
I really don't see, I mean, I've been doing this 10 years, I think I've permitted out two of them on my whole career. You don't see a lot of them, because you still have a problem with, you still can run into issues where if you're burning, and I've had this happen, like low-pressure days where the clouds are low, the smoke is, that comes out of the smoke stacks, isn't really a high heat, and it kinda tends to hang low. And you get a lot of neighbors that complain. And then it becomes a health department issue, and the health department always has the right to go back if you're causing some kind of public hazard. They can shut you down from using it. They have that authority.
Have you permitted any of these adult?
No. Thank you.
Just so I get it straight, this is what we do now?
No, that's.
That's what you wanna do?
That's what I'd like to do, yeah. The one that looks more like this is what we're using right now.
The last two pages?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to compare, I didn't, didn't.
You'll see there's a lot of like square footage.
Like 18 cents per square foot, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it just becomes really complicated to try to do them.
One more question about it. Brian, again, back to the same line here, after wood-fired boilers and temporary structures like tents, you have to get a $75 permit. I mean, we have to cut off on tents, I mean, some kids got his pup tent in the backyard.
The tents, well, no, there's state standards for what requires an actual permit.
Does it go by square footage?
It's like 600 square foot, so they're larger tents.
Thank you.
Okay. We all have this in front of us, do we feel comfortable enough to adopt it right now, or do we wanna table it and go down to a later date?
I don't know that my mind's gonna change any, but.
Mine is.
I mean, I would rather go on, Brian's right, I mean, he provides one who does this. It's not to say that we can't go back to the old way if it doesn't work. I mean, if one works and whatever, I mean, we can always change it.
Yeah, a year from now, you can look back to see what kind of fees have been generated and.
Yeah, right.
Make a motion, we approve the new, the new fee schedule.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes, would you like it to be effective?
Uh, today.
Well, does Brian have, is there a particular date you would be good for yours?
Actually, since we're using the electronic permitting, I'll have to give them a little bit of time to redo the fee schedule.
Should it be something that should be done at the beginning of the fiscal year? I know it's a long ways off, but how much time do you need?
I don't need anything, but I mean, it's up to, totally up to you.
April 1st.
I mean, I can override what the fee says, but I just.
April 1st, I agree.
Yeah, April Fool's Day. Change it on the website.
It's a joke.
It's also Easter.
Easter, that's right. Okay. Motion's been made for April 1st. There's a second on that?
I did.
I just have one more question.
Sure, John, go ahead.
Are you going to send out notifications to contractors or anything like this?
I won't send out notifications, but it'll be on the website that we can change, yeah.
Okay. So they have some type of?
There's no way to mail everybody something, but.
Yeah, yeah.
When they go to sign in, I can have something saying, you know, there's been a change in the fees.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Appellations in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. John.
Moving on then, why don't we take a look at the town clerk, Department 161. So you have a small increase in salaries consistent with the cost of living increase that was awarded to nonrepresented employees. There's an additional eleven hundred dollars. And you can generally see what those items are and expenses, other charges and expenses. That's really miscellaneous category. There's an updating of the dog licensing software. We hadn't updated it in many years and it took quite an extra effort, so we're going to update that just like any other software on an annual basis. And a little, a little bit more money for, for travel, although the out of state travel, if you can see that, has been combined with travel, lodging and meals into one number. So it's really a wash on that.
Okay, TA?
The next budget is elections, this is Department 162. Now, one of the strange things that happens with this budget is it varies by the amount of elections. And last year we had one election. This coming fiscal year, we're going to have three elections, the town election, state perimeter and state election. So it's up by two thirds generally. So you can see on, on top of the increase in elections, you have the 1.75% that was awarded to nonrepresented employees and a little bit more money in there for the Inky Bell purchases and so forth.
TA?
Okay. Along with Department 162 is a first capital request that I've gotten this year, and that's for new voting machines. And total request, including trade-in, is ten thousand eight hundred dollars. I think that's for two machines. What is really fascinating about this is that town clerk was able to dig out information from when we last bought voting machines. That was nearly 20 years ago. And it was supposed to have a useful life of 10 years at the time and we paid nearly the same amount in 1999.
We could pull out those crank ones. I bet you they still were there, right?
Our fail-safe.
The same type, Ken?
No, these are, these are brand new machines, touchpad machines that Debbie believes the state is going to require all municipalities to go to. So she wants to move, because of the age of these machines, obviously wants to get ahead of the curve and get them out.
Can you expand on that with touchpads?
Well, I'm not overly familiar with it, but I think, yeah, I think you touch the screen for your.
It's like smartphone. It just touches the screen.
And I trust it'd be hard to hack by a foreign power?
Yeah. Yeah, yes.
TA?
Unless the Russians are the service order. Okay. Board of Registars. Minimal increase in that, you know, hundred and twenty dollars in salaries that goes along with the increase given to nonrepresented employees and thirty-six dollars for postage.
None of this goes up because of the number of elections?
No, isn't that surprising?
Because I thought it would.
There are some, you know, there are some night hours, but I don't know what the variance is.
Because each, at each election is in there some weeks.
Yeah, the registrars, the registrars have to hold some hours. Yeah.
I think, yeah, they hold them in conjunction with their regular office hours.
Oh, I.
Instead of having a special session, you're right. I thought they did it on weekends or on, at night or maybe they changed their hours.
There are some weeknights that they do it. I assume Debbie is, you know, I can't answer for her because I don't know for sure, but I assume that she's got that.
TA?
Okay, then we have a couple of the treasurer's budgets. One is tax title foreclosure. This is a small amount of money, just Department 159, we hold aside for any of the properties we've repossessed for nonpayment of taxes prior to their being auctioned or sold. We may have to maintain them. This is down considerably. We only have really two properties, one with a house, the White House, and then the apartment firm. That's all we have right now. One in process, we don't own yet.
TA?
Last is in Department 913, that's unemployment insurance. We are self insured for unemployment. This has been five thousand dollars for many years, but with the onset of the Great Recession, we put five thousand into a special treasurer's reserve account that you can draw on without further appropriation or approval. And you can see I've shown you the balance there. So we did an analysis at one time that showed we never went over like eleven thousand dollars in unemployment payment. So we have a total of nine thousand dollars in both of those accounts, so it should be fine. And the last thing on the budget is the update of the, the mass, no, the select board, thank you. Thank you, Mark. So you'll see we have budget for all the select board members at a 1.75% increase. All of the expenses are the same, making the total increase three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
I have a question. You're, you're listing salaries for five people. I'm aware that one person is not taking a salary.
That's correct.
Well, shouldn't that be reflected in this? I mean, then.
Well, I did, that came up and I did discuss it with the chair.
Okay.
And then we thought it might be just to have, instead of having that bounce up or down when somebody leaves, that it might go back up again.
So how does that money, when it's not spent on salary, where is that?
It goes, it falls back, if it's not spent, it falls back to free cash and is reappropriated.
I'm, and I think that's good, but I just think it could be clearer just to say, you know, this one of them is zero, one of the members is zero on that line. That might be my preference, but I leave it to the chair.
Yeah, Sarah left it to the board.
Okay.
If you'd like to do.
Okay. TA?
Well, we have the raise too.
Traditionally, the salary portion of the select board's budget, we leave to the finance committee. We don't even discuss it for obvious reasons.
But there's no reason we can't discuss it.
Well, I think for obvious reasons.
Are you talking about the raise or are you talking about the salary?
Salary and the raise is the same thing. Leave it to the, leave it to the finance committee. They do it every year. They come back with their judgment. Does the raise should be included or not?
I, I think I should be able to comment on it and I would like to make the comment on the raise. I think the raise is very small and I think it would be nice if we declined it. That would be my comment.
John?
Yeah. On expenses, meetings, the two thousand dollars, what's it for? We haven't spent it and.
Would be two select board members going to the M and A conference.
That's what it's for?
Yeah.
Do we really need two people to go or?
Well, at one time we.
Oh, I thought that that was included in the dues and memberships and travel type stuff, but it isn't. I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize.
It could be if we were, those expenses, as you know, you know, those, those numbers are fungible based upon what is actually spent. But a number of years ago, we traditionally budgeted for one person to go and then two people were going and maybe three years or four years ago, we started budgeting for two people to go.
Yeah, because the actuals, the actuals on it, if they go back to 16 is 427, 17 is 210. And this year is nothing.
And nobody wanted this year.
Well, I don't know what, you know, I don't know, 427 and 210, they didn't go down there either. I guess, I, I thought somebody did. I thought someone last year went, but.
Not someone went last year.
But it only costs 210 dollars?
Yeah.
I, I just don't know the reason to have it as high as it is, that's all. Given it historical.
Ain't at McDonald's, that's.
Thank you for that.
Just, I got something just real quick. So if you, whether you choose to not draw a salary or if you choose to donate or you choose to draw a salary and we get an increase, this still has to go in front of the, as the town meeting.
Yes.
So if somebody said that we're here tonight to vote ourselves a raise, that'd be untruthful because we're not voting ourselves a raise.
No.
This is all going to the town. So whoever says that, it's untruthful. This is going to the town and they will make the decision whether we're getting a raise or we're getting paid or any of that stuff. So just so that's clear, we're not doing that tonight. Whoever says that.
And I think there's an interesting thing that people might not understand. The finance committee is independently elected, but the finance committee is an arm of the town meetings, an arm of the, some legislative body that doesn't report to the select board or the town manager, is completely independent and reports to town meetings. So they scrutinize this independently of our opinions.
So we'll send this to?
Thank you.
Do you want to send this to?
Well, it's going to go to, it's going to go to finance anyways. Everything goes to finance.
Would you like to adjust the meetings? I mean, anything you want to change, we'll, we'll change it.
Should we knock it down to one person only?
Well, I just, I just want to knock it down to a reasonable amount. And if we're, in the past three years, all we've spent is 400 dollars.
I agree with John.
Would a thousand dollars be good to knock it down?
Sure.
I don't know.
You can cut that in half about.
A half.
Sure. Let's see, we just, let's see what people spend. We've been under about a thousand bucks in the past couple of years.
So if we do it a thousand dollars instead of two thousand dollars.
Is that consensus?
And then, then see what happens and, I don't know. Maybe it'll change again.
If there's a need, then we can always put a benefit, but I don't think it will.
Right. The main thing that, one of the main things that comes out of your budget is our membership with the M and A.
Yes.
That can't change.
Because that's up.
That's important.
That's up at the, the other line items.
Yes, it's not, not in there.
Right.
Okay. So on the overall budget, there's nothing material in the budget. You'll see in all the line items, those that we've considered including, those that we've considered tonight are highlighted and there's no, has no significant change from the last time we looked at it. The big change was last week when we incorporated the school district's initial budget, tentative budget in here. So if you want to look at it quickly and have any questions, we have the trade answer there.
Can you, can you explain, maybe not necessarily for all of us, but for our viewers, what it means to be under the levy limit? Because it looks like right now for FY19, we're almost at 700,000 dollars, which to me is a lot. And I just want to know what, can you explain that in layman's terms?
Yes, it means that if, if we need, and remember, this is still very preliminary because we have some other big budgets to look at, but right now where our 600, our calculation shows 688,000 dollars under levy limit, which means that we could raise another 688,000 dollars if we had to for some reason.
Without going to an override.
Without going to an override.
Right.
Right.
So if we had something that was, well, I don't know, unforeseen, but what, something we really needed to do that without going to an override, we could decide on increasing our tax levy?
We could increase the tax levy by an additional 688,000 dollars as it stands now if we needed to.
And in past years, that, that limit is just about, we've just about been pumping?
We were bouncing along at zero from the Great Recession onward for about five years.
To point out too, that 600, 700,000 represents about a dollar and a half on the tax rate.
Your, your calculation is probably better than mine, John, if you say that. I believe you.
Thank you. So it's an economically sound?
Oh my God, we're in great shape.
Okay. I guess that's what I wanted to try to get out there, that's all.
That's good to hear.
And I should point out too, as of right now, as we sit here, it looks as though the taxes have only increased by 1.5% for about 60 bucks for the average homeowner. Very, this is very preliminary.
We're going to hold you to that.
I hope we can stay there. We haven't seen, you know, health insurance and things like that are highly valid yet.
Did I just say something?
Yes.
About the budget, Eddie, Ben? Mark, I'm so glad you brought up that point about the selectmen voting themselves a raise. First of all, they don't have the authority to make vote themselves a raise in spite of this email that's been circulated by one of our more distinguished citizens at Dalton, where she says, attended select board who will, who will vote through the issue we talked about. I've also heard they're probably going to vote themselves a raise. Impossible. It's only the town meeting that can vote raises. I'm glad you brought that up. It's an absolute falsehood. And just to add to that, one other falsehood in this email that was circulated by one of our more distinguished citizens, I can attest to the fact that the select board members don't study the issues in between, they just vote through whatever Ken recommends. That's a whole story. And she can attest to it. I'd like to hear that. Thank you. Here, Eddie. You were probably complicit in that.
I was not.
Oh. Your name's on it, geez, that's too bad.
Really?
I didn't give one up.
Oh, Bob, here.
I didn't need it.
Because Mark brought it up, I think, I thought I wanted to comment on the, and confirm what he said, that it's an absolute.
No, what, what she's saying, what she's giving you reference that I said that the Dalton agricultural land could be converted to a football field.
Okay, wait a minute.
That's the part I think.
This isn't on the agenda, guys, okay? We're going to, we're going to move on.
But you misquoted what, what she said.
Save that for later, okay?
I misquoted what she said. There it is.
Guys, enough.
What you're proving to me, what you're proving to me is only that fault.
Oh, you were only a part of this.
John?
I see. I got it. I got it.
Okay. Item 12, we'll call the school building committee update. John?
Okay. I'll do that, the budget real quick. There's not, there's not a lot more. We did go over the tentative budget. As for the, last week, as for the building committee, there's, there's a number of meetings that are coming up. There's the school building committee educational planning subcommittee meeting, which is this, the 15th at 3:00 PM at Wacona. That's the committee that works directly with the designer, architect, and then they report to the regular building committee, which is also the same date at 4:30 PM in the same location at the Wacona High School library. So it is open to the public and I encourage people to attend just to get an idea of what's going on here. Also, while I've got the schedule out here, on the 15th is also the school committee meeting, regular school committee meeting at 7:00 PM at Nessus Regional Middle School. What's important about that meeting, it's the public hearing on the tentative budget. So if there's any comments board members may have, public may have, whoever, finance committee, and Terry usually goes, please, please attend because that's the time when you can voice your opinion to the school committee at large. Oh, the workshops, community workshops, remember I told you they'd be taking place periodically? The first set of those workshops or meetings are going to take place March 27th. I know it's a long time down the road and I'll announce it again. I know it's a long time down the road, and I'll announce it again. Ours in town here will be at Wocona Regional High School at 7:00 PM on that date. There's also gonna be one on that same date at Windsertown Hall at 5:00 PM. And then on the 29th, there will be one at Beckett Washington School at 5:00 PM and Kittredge Elementary School at 7:00 PM. The information's gonna be the same at all these meetings, so if you can't make one, it doesn't mean, well, I'm from Dalton, I can't go to the other ones. Yeah, you can. You can go to any one you want, or you can go to several of them if you want to. But it's important to keep up. It'll keep the public up to... As to what's going on with the project. And we'll also be there for any comments that are... Wish to be made or suggestions that wish to be made by the public. So I encourage people to attend. Okay. Quickly about the budget. As you know from last week, I don't know how in-depth you got. I didn't watch the whole meeting. But our assessment is a little bit less than last year, and it's at 1.64% at this point in time, which is the tentative budget. And our capital budget assessment is down by almost $26,000 from last year, which is good news.
That is good news.
There is a seven-town advisory meeting tomorrow at Nescus Regional Middle School at 7:00 PM. And on the agenda at this point in time, again, is gonna be an explanation of the building project, also the tentative budget, and the state of the district in regard to learning objectives for students, the regional agreement updates, because there's gonna... It's being revised. And there will be, well, not necessarily a draft, but they'll be going over what revisions that will be made. There will also be discussion on vocational school subjects. And that is in regard to where we have to or where we can send our bulk ed students to particular schools. And hopefully, with the building of the new Taconic, we'll offer new subjects that aren't offered close by, that thing. Yeah. The... John, you asked about this, and unfortunately, I don't have the numbers from...
The census?
Yeah, from 2016.
I think Dick Flagatell was here that night.
Yeah, we're only off by about 10.
10?
10 total.
Only 10 decline?
Yeah.
I think Dick said that night was under 100.
It's only about 10.
That's good news.
But the thing, right now, we're at a district... District total of... And this is considering all students of 1614? Okay, all students, all schools, whatever. BRPC, as you know, did a study on population and student decline or...
Yeah.
Increase. And their assessment of that is by 2028, that figure looks like it'll be down to 1558. Specifically with Wocona, Wocona's population right now is 435. And given that same study, it will be down to... What they're thinking will be down to about 405. Now, remember as I was telling you how they were gonna build the new Wocona to a certain student population? This is why they're kinda doing it. It's kinda like in the middle of these figures, okay? But that doesn't mean things can increase. You never know what's gonna happen. And hopefully, the population in the area and thus the school population will go up. But right now, that trend doesn't appear to be taking place.
Long-term trend.
Yeah, well, you don't know. It's like long-term investment, too. You don't know what's gonna happen down the road.
Absolutely.
So we'll see what happens. But unfortunately, that's what you gotta look at right now, and that's why things are being planned in that way. So we'll see what happens. And that's my report. And if there's any questions...
Yeah, Eddie. Is sport any alternatives other than building a new high school?
Well, that's what the architectural group is gonna look at. It's either, as I've said in the past, it's either gonna be a new one. Do some new and renovate old or renovate. They haven't even gotten close to figuring that out yet.
But it's not the same reimbursement rate for renovation?
As far as I know, it is.
Really? I thought the substitution was less, huh? Could be wrong.
Oh. Oh. That would be a good question to ask.
Yeah.
But I don't believe that changes... I don't believe that changes the amount, because the MSBA kinda dictates what you do with the number of students that you have and how you do it. It's... Again, I wish I could go to all these meetings, but I haven't been able to.
I wonder why.
So it is a very interesting process and an involved process. And again, you can go on the website and find out what's been taking place from the minutes. There's also a videotape of these vision sessions that have been taking place. There were two of them. That if you want to watch them for eight hours, you can. Or you could fast forward to them, too. A lot of people have done that. In fact, there was one group in Peru that did that. They got together, they watched them. I think it was on the snow day that they had recently and went through it, fast forwarded through the snooze parts, I guess, and then just, you know, or what was important to them. That's something that you can do. So that's also on the website as well. The district is trying to keep everyone as informed as possible, and rightfully so, because this is a project of very importance and expense. So... Thank you. Yeah. Anything else?
No. Thank you. That's a lot of work, John.
Again, rumors floating around.
Sure.
One of them was it mentioned that the consideration was a possible combination of the Nescus, the middle school, with the high school in one building and turning the current Nescus building into a regional...
Grammar school.
And no consideration that has...
Well, because the MSBA grant won't cover anything being done to Nescus.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Strictly limited.
It's Wocona. It's a high school. And I mean, well, say if we... Say if you wanted to build on the same ground as Nescus and, you know, like, I forget which South County school it is, is a combined campus.
Green Grant Field down in Chapel Hill.
Lee is, too.
Lee is, okay. Whatever. I mean, if you wanted to do something like that, I guess you could. But if you do, you can't do anything physical to the existing building of Nescus.
Yes, yes.
This is Wocona.
Well, if you wanted to build a building that encompasses...
In close proximity to Nescus.
Uh, what is it? Six through... Seven through 12? Grade seven through 12?
Ours is strictly a nine through 12.
Yeah, but if you incorporated the middle school into that building, one building, then the grades would be seven through 12?
Well, I guess technically it would be, but not so technically it wouldn't be, because you'd still have the... What is it, six through eight in the Nescus building? It would still be there, but maybe they would be physically connected somehow so that students could use...
But you just think that...
If needed to be. I know it was... I know it was talked about, but I do remember that it was said that you can't do anything physically to Nescus and get reimbursed for it. That has nothing to do with the Wocona building project or how it was proposed. It has to be done on the school property. And that's school property, that's district property. I'll go through there.
I guess my point is, when you're looking at a total population or a projected population of only 500, 400 students...
That's not the total. We're talking Wocona.
No, Wocona.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
At Wocona, at the high school.
Yeah.
It's hard to spend tens of millions of dollars on 400 students, projected, or maybe even less. So I think it's incumbent upon the boards and yourself to look at a lot of options.
Well, they are.
Okay, good.
Believe me, they are. I can't voice what they have been, because as I said, I don't have the specifics on that. But it's in the infancy stages right now of planning.
Yeah.
The architect just got on board, and the project manager has been here for a few months. So there's a whole year practically that's gonna take place before we even get to that point where a project is either fought to be decided on and then voted on and approved. You know what I mean? So it's quite a ways off.
And just one final observation on that subject. I'm certain that we're going to lose a good many students to Taconic with the new vocational school.
I don't know.
It'd be an additional factor in how many students populate the... A proposed school.
I don't know that... I don't know that that will...
Yeah?
That may take place, because if anything, I think what will take place is Taconic may offer different vocations. And thus, students won't have to go down into the valley versus they can go into Taconic. But our students are still going. You know what I mean?
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know, then that's... That would be great, if that could happen. Again, I don't know if it's gonna happen, but it could happen. I don't perceive that taking place again. I could be wrong. I'm not in the know, but I have a fairly good idea, but I don't think it's gonna take place.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Excellent, John. Okay. Town member update?
Several things for you this evening. One is a communication from town council to me last Friday. And in this, it's a long, detailed letter, but in it, two potential articles were sent to us for the town meeting. We call... Made a decision to extend the moratorium on all types of marijuana establishments in town. And if you turn, it's the second page in the handout, you can see that can be accomplished by a warrant article which merely strikes June 30, 2018, and some related language and adds in December 31, 2018. So now I'm working on the draft annual town meeting warrant for you. For the next time we meet, I'll have an initial draft for you, and this will be one of the articles on. I wanted to see that in advance. And if you have any questions, now I have to try to answer them. I don't claim any specific expertise on it. The bylaw, this is a zoning bylaw, and there has to be a public hearing on it by the planning board, and we anticipate that will happen in March. Also, tomorrow, official letter communicating this on behalf of the Select Board to the planning board for their review. The second proposal is actually two bylaws. And this is what the chief brought up when we had the discussion on banning marijuana establishments. One is on public consumption and one is open containers. So there'll be proposals for two new bylaws. The first, really augmenting of what we have already, I think it's, I'm not sure which chapter it is, but section 18-1. So you can see, it simply adds in the bold area there much more language about consuming any marijuana product in an open place with an open container in Dalton. The second is entitled Public Consumption or Use of Marijuana. So this would be an entirely new bylaw defining what marijuana products are and then banning public consumption. And in this memorandum to us, she opines that, yes, we can assess fines as the chief
So the next step, this is gonna go to the planning board?
The first, only the first article, because that's a zoning bylaw, which extends the moratorium on all marijuana establishments in the town until December 31st. The second, two bylaws would be general bylaws.
Yeah.
Remember, a zoning bylaw is passed by a two-thirds vote. Zoning bylaws require a simple majority. And they model what we have for consumption of alcohol.
Right.
In town.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is there another step in this second part, other than going to town meeting?
No, just little town meeting. It'll go on the warrant and...
As long as we approve what's...
As long as you approve it for the warrant, it'll go on the warrant. And we'll plenty time to clarify any of the language in this. We won't have to finish up the warrant until about the middle of March, so we have an extra week this year.
Because if we can get it on annual town meeting, it would be the worst.
They both should be on annual town.
Yeah, they should be.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the new town bylaws to put on the annual town meeting as proposed or as written.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made. Second, and there's not any further discussion. Everybody comfortable with it?
This all came from town council?
Yes.
Everybody comfortable? Allo's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second piece of information we just got today is our official approval for the use of Chapter 90, money to repay old Windsor Road repairs. You can see that communicated to the Select Board today.
One of the, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, yeah.
One of the things that came up through, well, through school committee, I guess, and in regard to the building committee, is that if this project goes through, there will be a lot of construction activity on Windsor Road, which may result in...
Jeez, yeah.
Well, what someone... I'm not gonna let you do. It was kinda funny. They said, "Can you hold off and fix Windsor Road until maybe after this gets done if it goes through?" And I go, "Are you kidding me? That won't happen." So at any rate, it will... I'm gonna bring it up as maybe something that we should address through the building of the school. And I talked with John Roughly about it, and he said, "More than likely, what would take place is just a simple resurfacing, but not to the extent of what's gonna take place now." He says, "The base, the asphalt base is good," he says, "but the gravel base isn't the best." And this whole project that we're doing is not gonna be ripping up the road and putting in new gravel, I would imagine.
Right. Yeah, I think it's just a...
Strictly fair.
But if in fact, if in fact, there might be problems with construction vehicles going over that through the term of building a new school, if in fact it does go through, we should make some type of provision on that, and I'll voice that opinion at the meetings.
Good point.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll see what happens. I'm glad you brought it up, because I didn't think of it, and it's...
It's gonna beat up the road, there's no doubt.
And it could very well happen somewhere. But John was saying, it's not a major deal, but it should be addressed. So we have a good road.
Okay. The last thing I wanted to let you know about is that we had a very productive meeting last Thursday.
Okay. We, I don't know, we're spending here 300, some thousand?
Yeah.
How many have we left in the balance in the account when we...
Yeah, yeah. I think with this year's appropriation, we're gonna have, we'll probably have a couple hundred thousand.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna look at the numbers. I'm not gonna use all our Chapter 90, because this is all prior years.
Right, yeah, accumulate it.
There's something over 200,000 left.
We have 225 or something like that.
Yeah, annually. We had a meeting with, Department has, particularly Public Safety Department, last Thursday evening, I sent all of you some information on the LED streetlight project. And we agreed at that meeting that we'd try to get comments on the proposed design, try to get them to me, and I'll communicate them to David Wazaleski and Richard Hall, who've been the members of the Green Committee, working diligently on this project, so that we could try to get a final plan from Tanco before we bring it back to the Select Board for introduction to the public. So at that meeting, we'll have some kind of public presentation. I hope the Dalton Community Cable will be able to broadcast that right from here, so everybody can see what we're planning with the LED streetlights. So if you get a chance, take a look at the plan. Any comments you have, let me know. I'm gonna gather them all up and give them to Richard and David, and then we're gonna go back to Tanco and tweak the plan a little bit before we make it public. And that concludes my report. Unless anybody has any questions about any projects.
Yeah, I had a quick question. When did the new VA representative start?
He started last week.
Really?
Yeah.
So he's here on Wednesday?
He's here on Wednesday. And we're adjusting his hours, but he's here doing the same thing that Roseanne, he's been here in the morning, been over at the senior center in the afternoon.
But he stayed morning. What time is that? 10:00?
Well, he was here earlier, and that's what we're gonna try to hit the sweet spot in terms of what his schedule is here. So we haven't set the hours yet, but he did, he went over to the senior center, introduced himself to Kelly, who's here in the morning. He'll be back, Roseanne, and he will get together. He's at a conference, and he and Roseanne will get together in a week or so and go over, you know, all the caseload and the files and everything like that, and we'll stay out of regular hours, and we'll begin to announce. But if anybody, you'll see it on the announcements, if anybody has a question or a comment or something that they need from the veteran service officer, they can call his number and leave a message. If they don't get him, call our officer, and we will try to carry him.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Remarks at the Select Board. Items for future agendas.
I don't have an item, but can we... I think we can take off the one dated 5/22, 10/23 review of the speed study in Dalton Division Road.
Yeah, that can...
That's gone by the boards. We can take that off the list.
Leads us to the announcements. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM, which went into effect November 15, 2017, will be in effect until April 15, 2018. I'll hold office hours by appointment in the Select Board at the Town Hall. For further information, please call 684-6111, extension 11. Please note that Dalton's official meeting posting agendas and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Town Hall, 462 Main Street in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception to the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The building inspection office hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and from Tuesday, from 8:00 AM to 12:30. The Veterans Agent will be away until February 21st. You may leave a message for him by calling 413-684-6111, extension 19. Like that. Okay, a motion toward the adjournment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good one.